Good evening, everyone. This is the Ogden City Council meeting for January 17th, 2012. Let the roll call reflect that all council members are present. And we will now have Vice Chair Blair lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
May I ask you to rise?
The Pledge of Allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have a moment of silence. The first item on our agenda tonight is a nice honor. This is a recognition from the Utah Municipal Clerk Association and a presentation to Tracy Hansen upon receiving the Master Municipal Clerk. And Mrs. Kofed and others are here to present this.
Baron Councilmembers, it's my pleasure to be here tonight. First and foremost, my name is Fenella Kofed. I am the City Recorder for Eagle Mountain, representing the Utah Municipal Clerks Association. And first and foremost, we'd like to express our condolences to you and your city members for the recent loss of your officer, and we hope that those that are injured will have a speedy recovery. On a more positive note, it is my utmost pleasure to come before you tonight to do this presentation for the Master Municipal Clerk for Tracy Hansen. I know Tracy, and I know that she's down there squirming, as she doesn't like to be in the spotlight, but she has received a designation that is worthy of us taking the time and coming before you tonight. For the benefit of the public and new council members, I'd like to take a moment and just give you a brief history of the municipal clerk. Along with public enemy number one, the municipal clerk or city recorder is the oldest of public servants in local government. Profession traces back before biblical times. The modern Hebrew translation of town clerk literally means reminder. The early keepers of archives were often called remembrancers, and before writing came into use, their memory served as the public record. Ancient Greek Greece had a city clerk who read official documents publicly. At the opening of a meeting, one of its first duties, one of their first duties, was to decree a curse upon anyone who should seek to deceive the people. We're thinking of having one of those courses provided this year at the Institute and Academy. The Bible also has many references to town clerks. They were an important part of the Holy Roman Emperor government, and the position became more significant in England and colonial times. Over the years, municipal clerks have become the hub of government, the direct link between inhabitants of their community and the government. The clerk is the historian for the community. The entire recorded history of the town and its people are in his or her care. I'm happy to let you know also that we do have about half a dozen gentlemen who have joined our organization, and you see it more prevalent in other states to have more men in the profession, but we're happy to have those gentlemen that are city recorders and clerks throughout the state. The eminent political scientist Professor William Bennett Monroe, one of the first textbooks on, in one of the first textbooks on municipal administration stated, "No other office of municipal service has so many contacts. It serves the mayor, the city council, the city manager, and all administrative departments without exception. All of them call upon it almost daily for some service or information. Its work is not spectacular, but it demands versatility, alertness, accuracy, and no end of patience. The public does not realize how many loose ends the city administrative, excuse me, the city administration of this office pulls together." That was written over 50 years ago and is even more appropriate for today. Let me put things into perspective. We have 238 cities and towns within the state that participate with UMCA, the Utah Municipal Clerks Association. A little over a third of those clerks and recorders have a designation that is done through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Tracy is one of 34 individuals within the state of Utah that has attained this Master Municipal designation. We recognize that some of these smaller communities struggle with having the necessary funds and educational opportunities to provide to their employees. Our organization does what we can to reach out to those individuals and provide scholarships for various educational events. Mayor, City Council members, and administration, you are to be commended for offering your employees the opportunity to get the education that they need to be masters in their roles and their duties as city recorders. Without your help, they couldn't do what they're doing, and it is really important for the municipal clerks to get the training they need to stay current. So what did Tracy have to do to get this title? The Master Municipal Clerk program is one of two professional designations granted by IIMC. The MMC program is an advanced continuing education program that prepares participants to perform complex municipal duties. The program has an extensive and vigorous, rigorous educational component and professional and social contribution components that they're required to do. The MMC applicant must demonstrate that they have actively pursued education and professional activities. Tracy first had to receive her CMC designation, and then she had to get 60 points in advanced education and 40 points in professional and social contributions. Typically, you receive one point per two contact hours, and in some cases, it takes two to six contact hours to get a point. So she's had to work very hard to be able to get the points that she needs to get this designation. The Ogden City Recorder's Office is a progressive, is progressive and a leader in its field. Other cities look to your staff to help them work through issues and share ideas about records management and other duties specific to the office. You should be very proud of your staff, and especially Tracy. Tracy had to submit, I think maybe six times, eight, eight times to get IIMC to acknowledge the points that she turned in for the educational hours. So it's not just a matter of taking any old class and submitting the information. They're very specific to the tasks that she performs for your city. She's an exceptional individual, and you should, you don't need me to tell you this, but she is an exceptional individual and very talented, much like your other city recorder. And I, for one, know that there are many, many other clerks out there that do look to Ogden and do come to Ogden to see what you have going on here, because we know you're doing it right. We appreciate having these ladies in our organization, and would like to take a moment to present this plaque to Tracy. It states, "The International Institute of Municipal Clerks hereby confers the designation of Master Municipal Clerk upon Tracy Hansen, MMC, in fulfillment of requirements prescribed by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks." Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're awesome. (applause). I have to mention, too, that I apologize, but once we're done, we will be leaving. We do have other city recorders here that are running back to their meetings back in various parts of the state, so we appreciate you taking the time or allowing us the time to come and do this great presentation for Tracy. Would you like to say your name? Thank you. You need to. If I put this right here, I'll hold this for you. I'm good at holding this.
I just wanted to thank the council and administration for allowing me the opportunity to attend the classes I need, to receive my designation. There are so many different aspects to our job that it helps us to have education and keep up to date with all of that. And I'm also grateful to my, for my coworkers, their support in this, because it takes, the education takes us away from our duties sometimes, and they've had to help fill in, and I appreciate that. And appreciate the support of my family in my job here and what I do. So I love working here at Ogden City and hope I can continue to do a good job.
Thank you, Tracy.
Bravo.[614.88][614.88](applause).
And Tracy, we all appreciate your professionalism. Thank you. Next is an appointment, and this is the appointment of Mayor Michael P. Caldwell to the Central Weber Sewer Board.
And I will make a motion to appoint Mayor Michael P. Caldwell to the Central Weber Sewer Board.
I second it. We have a motion from Vice Chair Blair and a second from Councilmember Stevens. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and congratulations, Mayor. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes, the minutes of the closed executive session of September 6, 2011. Councilmember Stevens?
Yes, Chair. It's a pleasure to report that our minutes are correct and exact, and appreciate that.
Thank you. And the minutes of the study session and work session of November 1, 2011. Vice Chair Blair?
Yes, Chair Garner, I reviewed those minutes and found them to be correct, to the best of my knowledge.
And minutes of the regular meeting of November 1, 2011. Councilmember Van Huser?
Yes, Chair Garner, these are correct, to the best of my recollection.
Thank you. And the minutes of the work session meeting of November 22, 2011. Councilmember Wicks?
Thank you. I've reviewed those and found them to be correct, and with that, would make a motion that we approve the minutes identified in items A, B, C, and D.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Councilmember Van Huser to approve these minutes. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved. And then we have public hearing. First on the public hearing agenda is the vacation of a portion of Buchanan Avenue between 28th and 29th Street, proposed ordinance 2012-1. Mr. Montgomery?
Mr. Montgomery had a family emergency, and Mr. McConkey's going to try and pinch-hit, so be kind to him. He just got this information about 30 minutes ago, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The item in front of you this evening is the vacation of 16.5 feet on the west side of Buchanan between 28th and 29th Street. The genesis of this, a petitioner, property owner, homeowner, came in and wants to put an addition, a garage on the side of his home. And in order to have the appropriate setback, he is asking that a portion of Buchanan be vacated. Buchanan is an exceptionally wide street through this area. It is 99 feet wide, and that's what the right-of-way is. It's a 99-foot right-of-way. Typically, it would be a 66-foot right-of-way. There is 44 feet of pavement, and that is between, between the two curb lines, there is 44 feet. And so by taking 16 and 1/2 feet off the west side, it would still allow for... So as you can see by these two diagrams, the top, on the top diagram, this would, by vacating the 16 and 1/2 feet, that would still provide for two 10-foot travel lanes, a 4-foot bike lane on each side, and two 8-foot parking strips. And in those parking areas, there would, that would accommodate 37 parking stalls. Another scenario is that the bottom one, you could still have your two 10-foot travel lanes, but on the west side, a 6-foot parking or bike lane, and on the, on the right-hand side, or the east side, an 18-foot angle parking. If the city decided to try to maximize the parking in that area, they could go to 48 stalls by putting 18 feet of parking, or leaving an 18-foot parking strip on the, on the east side. So they could, if there was an increase in demand, they could, for parking, they could go to the 48 angle stalls on the east side, even, even with the, with the vacation. Other pertinent details, it has gone to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did vote favorably to vacate the 16 and 1/2 feet. We're fortunate that we have a 99-foot right-of-way in that area, but the recommendation from the Planning Commission was that even by accommodating the needs of this homeowner, we still have ample right-of-way for parking, even if we go to angle parking, but on, just on the east side. Have any questions about that?
How heavy is the traffic in this area, on this particular section?
I don't know why I asked to take any questions. That was not very smart on my part. I don't, I cannot tell you what the traffic count might be along Buchanan, and I apologize for that.
Can I just interject? I know we sort of have discussed that in the past, and it's, it's not a major thoroughfare.
Well, that's correct.
It doesn't go all the way through. Yeah, there's just a short section between 29th and...
Doesn't lead anywhere.
There was a concern of a citizen. Can you relate to that also?
Were the concerns of the citizens?
Mr. Peterson?
That if, if there is an unusual demand on parking in that area, as it's close to the 29th Street trailhead, that the argument that if, once you've given up public property, you've done that in perpetuity, and so that's, that's something that has to be looked at and evaluated carefully. Even keeping that in mind for the, the use of this street and the demand for parking, and going to angle parking on the, the east side, the Planning Commission felt that that was, that there was ample right-of-way left from that 99-foot right-of-way.
Mr. McConkey, with this, you know, if this vacation is approved, we're not changing the current gutters or curb or anything?
No, the curb, curb line, from curb to curb, the paving area would remain the same. There is currently, let's see if I can quickly find it here, there is, it would still leave 11 feet behind the curb for sidewalks if they decided to go to sidewalks in that area.
I believe that dealt more with the setback of his property, is what we're looking at?
The...
I believe this is for an addition.
It is, yes. It was, it is for a setback. Let's see if I've got...
And we are only vacating the west side, is that correct, of the street?
Correct.
Correct. It is just, it is just on the west side.
Have we done that also on the angled parking? Have we angled, have we implemented angled parking anywhere in front of a...
In front of a residential...
Residential home?
In residential neighborhoods.
Have we ever done that?
I can't think of any.
I can't either.
I'm not aware of any angle parking in residential areas. We have tested some of that in the central business district, and there are pros and cons with the angle parking.
Yeah, but that's a little bit different than a residential home.
Yeah, the residential is a, is a different...
I think the only angled parking that I can recall is adjacent with a park, you know, and it's on the park side of the street. It isn't usually on the, on the other side.
This doesn't have a park, is that right?
No, this is residence all around, which kind of brings my question up, is there some reason we're not vacating the, the excess property on both sides of the street? As much as it's already developed to that width and...
That would, that would be, that was not, the request is to minimize, I think, what is being vacated, and it was just, it was just the owner on the west side of the street that, that needed the additional space.
Well, I know Planning Commission oftentimes will, will take a singular petition and expand it when they, when they're vacating. And it looks like they have, in this case, it was, they've taken three parcels, vacated it from block to block, you know, corner to corner, but oftentimes, they'll go to the other side. I just wonder if there was some reason they chose not to do, to recommend that, or...
You know, I, you know, I can't, I can't give...
You're a little handicapped, I'm sure.
In many ways.[1311.26][1311.26](laughing).
And I believe the petitioner is here? If you want to come up, Mr. Handy?
I can probably answer those questions. First of all, for Mr. Hyer, when we did the petition, the city Planning Commission, I just went in for a variance, and the city Planning Commission proposed to myself that why don't we do a vacate from 28th Street, where I live on the corner to 29th Street, on the west side. The south, the north of me is, from Doxy Avenue to 28th Street, has already been previously vacated, and the city likes to vacate in blocks, like Mr. Hyer said. So they're just extending that vacation that has come from Doxy to 28th, and hopefully from 28th to 29th Street. And so when we filled out the vacation, the petition to vacate, which, there's a fee involved, and then you have to have your, you get your neighbors involved, and we just did the west side. We didn't talk to anybody on the, well, we didn't talk to anybody on the east side. And with that involved, we have to have a new survey done, which was proposed by the city, and that's, bids on that came anywhere from $2,500 to $5,000. And so we, as homeowners, split that cost, and we also paid for the petition fees, and also, once it's approved, if it is approved, then we have to put a new hub, or monument, or mark into the streets so they can do the new boundary lines, and then that's another $600 expense, too. So all the neighbors on the west side are absorbing those costs. Let me just show you the property in question. Yes, this is my property. It's at 1791 28th Street. The place, the, I'm proposing to put a third garage in this section right here. It stays on my property line. However, due to the fact that the city owns approximately 33 feet in from my curb, from the curb on Buchanan, if you take that into effect, what happens is, I don't know if that's visible, there's a line approximately right here, which would be the city's ownership. If I build my garage to this rock wall, I'm eight feet onto, I'm still on my property, but I'm eight feet too close to that property line. I think there's a 12-foot, I have to be 12 feet off the property line. Where I'm building this, proposing to build this garage, I'm not affecting anybody's house or anything on that, because I'm on a corner lot. I had some questions that were called. I had one person call me yesterday, wanted to know if this vacation would affect the trailhead. I said it doesn't have anything to do with the trailhead. On the letter that the city sent out, it's pretty specific, it just goes from 28th to 29th Street. 16 and 1/2 feet, or 33 feet on my property is not that big of an issue, because it's a side yard, and, you know, I mow it and landscape it and water it and take care of it. But the rest of my neighbors, the Pollys and the Rangos, the Malins, the East and the Noseworthy's, if you take 60, if you come in 33 feet from the curb into their property lines, you're well past the center of their yards. We're only proposing to take the 16 and 1/2 feet from, after the initial 16 and 1/2 feet in from the curb. So we're not going to affect the roadway at all, we're not affecting the curb at all, we're not affecting the travel pattern that's already existing in that property area up there. We're not, the parking will stay the same. It's just that we, as homeowners, will now have 16 and 1/2 feet, larger piece of property on our property. We will be assessed a new property tax, because we have larger lots, we're willing to pay for that, and the city will maintain just about everything else except the 16 and 1/2 feet from where their property line will now end. Are there any other questions?
Single car garage, or is this going to be a motorhome garage?
No, it's going to be a...
Single car garage.
Yes. Single car garage tied into this roof line here, coming out, and then just garage right there, and then I will extend my driveway a little bit to take that rock out of the way, make a little loop there for the driveway to come in, and I will lose my golf course hole, but I'm willing to do that. Anyway, that's pretty much what it's, where it's at.
Is there enough room there if the city wanted to put a sidewalk and a bike lane among there?
Absolutely. The city still owns 16 and 1/2 feet from the curb to the west, on the west side of my house, going west. The city Planning Commission told me they need 11 feet, I think, is it nine feet for the sidewalk, and then they allow an extra two feet or something?
Seven foot for a park strip and four for, for the sidewalk.
So they, so you still have your grass and your beauty, and then the, so if you take 11 feet, you still have five and a half feet beyond that, so. Now, that's a good question, because the existing sidewalk, if you've been up in that area, I know somebody who live up there, sidewalks don't have much of a pattern in that area. In other words, you can walk down 29th Street and have a sidewalk, and then it ends, and then it starts over, I mean, on the north side, and then you go on the south side, and it starts up again. If you come up on Buchanan, the sidewalk that is there now that is existing is from 29th Street, past Malins Court, and then past that new house on Malins Court. That's on the east side. I would think if you're going to extend a sidewalk and to continue that line, if that's so be it, they would bring that line up on the east side of Buchanan and not on the west side for a sidewalk, so. But it is a wide street, so sidewalks haven't been an issue up there. There's plenty of walking space, and like I said, we're not taking any of the curb or existing pavement. Anything else?
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so we'll accept public input. Please limit your comments to five minutes.
I'm sure we do need a name and address.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Chris Peterson. My address is 2945 Robidoux Road in Sandy, Utah. Could I have the visual? You just had a sheet right here.
Um, this one.
The aerial, the vertical aerial. This one would be great. With all due respect to the great work done by the Planning Department in many cases, I really think this is a, a case of a sledgehammer being used instead of a scalpel. I own approximately 1,500 acres across the street from this parcel, which would be starting right here and this area over here, okay? The 29th Street trailhead now has a bathroom and 53 parking spots, and frequently on weekends and on... and 53 parking spots, and frequently on weekends and on spring, summer, and fall afternoons, that parking lot fills up. So the overflow parking extends around the circle and on both sides of Buchanan and down 29th Street. I'm painfully aware of this, because people frequently park in front of my driveway and block my entrance to my 1,500-acre property. Ogden City has invested an awful lot of money in, and an awful lot of effort into promoting outdoor recreation. This is a case where I sincerely believe that a simple variance for a garage to the side of an existing double garage would have been entirely adequate to solve this problem. But by giving up this 16 and a half feet, you lose the chance to create a, an adequate trailhead parking facility for the 29th Street trailhead. I don't know why you would choose to offend the owner of 1,500 acres that currently allows the public to hike on my private property. And I will be offended if you choose to do this vacation instead of a simple variance for an entirely legitimate request for a garage. I think you're sending a message to me, and you're sending a message to the people of Ogden, that you really don't care that much about outdoor recreation. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Debbie Nosworthy. I live at 1788 29th Street, and I had no plans whatsoever to say anything. And I really don't have a strong position one way or the other. However, being on the corner, we do have an interest in the trails and also, obviously, our property. We love the trails. Our avid hikers probably spend my family every day on the trail. Very grateful for Mr. Peterson allowing the public to use that land. We are just extremely grateful to him for letting us do that. I just kind of want to address the parking issue. We have noticed that on holidays during the summer, there have been a few times that the parking is extreme, at an extreme level. We, as homeowners, do not in any way mind the public parking, you know, all along the front of our house, all along the side of our house, and they'll pull up and say, "Oh, we're sorry, do you mind if we park here?" And we'll say, "Absolutely not. We, go ahead. We, you know, would love that." My husband's out there offering the shade of our pine trees, bringing them drinks, making sure they're comfortable after they've hiked and are hot and sweaty, and we enjoy interacting with the public that come and use that area. So I would say of the 365 days of the year, there is a very small percentage of the time that that parking exceeds the parking lot. I do know there have been a few times when people are parked at that very east end of the cul-de-sac, which probably is where it blocks Mr. Peterson's access to his property. However, I, like I said, strongly believe that for the most part, and for the majority of the days, that there is ample parking in that parking lot. And when it does spill over, we do not mind whatsoever that the public needs to park, you know, along there. Obviously, it's public property, but we in no way resent that they come out of the parking lot and have to park by our home. In fact, like I said, we try to make them feel welcome and happy that they're just there and able to use the property, and again, grateful for Mr. Peterson to allow us to do that. So that was my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council members, mayor, I'm Joseph Baum, and I live at 1764 28th Street, right around the corner. And I think one thing that has failed to be mentioned here is that the vacation of this street has nothing really to do with parking, that we did the same thing on 28th Street from Buchanan down to Pierce about 35 years ago. I helped a neighbor to be able to build a carport, and when they built the house in '52, because of the street, the way it was laid out, they could not build a carport. And now that these people are older and up in the years, this carport has served a valuable purpose to them, to be able to allow them to park their vehicles underneath a double carport in the wintertime so they don't have to take the snow off of the vehicles. And if you look at this picture, and you look all the way down the street, if you were to not vacate this street and allow it to remain the way it is, it's like 28th Street, this happened about 35 years ago, and there was no sidewalk on our street, there's curb and gutter on both sides of the street, and I'll guarantee you that another 50 years from now, it's going to be the same way it is now, that there will not be a sidewalk put down that street. Same thing with this area here. The reason why the sidewalk was put from 29th Street to where the new house is, is because that was horse property at one time, and then it was developed into the subdivision back into Mayland's Court. So when they did that, they took part of the property back into the property and consequently put the sidewalk in front of there. Other than that, it would have been the same as the rest of the street, and that whole entire street from 27th to 29th has no sidewalk on it. It's just curb and gutter through that whole entire area. And that's how it remained. If you were to do, take property back, if you look at that red line, what you're talking about is cutting into people's property. And I think that it would be disastrous for the city to even think about doing that in that whole entire area. And that area is unique. When you look at 27th, going down 29th Streets the same way, you get down, further down past Fillmore, there's no sidewalk in that area, and it's just unique to that area, and that's how it is. People that walk, walk in the street. And as far as the few events that happen on the holidays that people park, when they do park, they park right along Buchanan. Doesn't impact the flow of traffic or anything. There's plenty of lane area for cars to go back and forth, both sides of the traffic. So I would recommend that it be passed, the way that it's been proposed. I see no impact to the area, to the residential community that lives in that whole entire area, and it would serve a purpose to the homeowner to be able to add on to his home with a single car garage. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Robert East, my name, 2885 Buchanan. I'm on the picture with the white car in the driveway. I can attest what Debbie Nosworthy has spoke, that traffic's not an issue with parking here, and I do appreciate Mr. Peterson letting the public use his ground. As you can tell by my girth, I don't hike very often, but my family does. So, but it's appreciative, but there is no issue with parking along there. Plenty of access, and the public is very respectful, and the street's wide enough to accommodate, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Seeing no movement, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner, and a second from Councilmember Wicks to close the public hearing. Roll call vote?
Voice vote.
Voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, I would make a motion that we adopt proposed ordinance 2012-1 with the caveat that maybe the city administration could work with Mr. Peterson to post some kind of no parking signs in front of his entrance.
We can do that, if that's okay with Mr. Peterson.
Also, I have a question. With the vacation, would that increase the...
Chair, you need a second before you have discussion.
I was going to say, I did have a first from Councilmember Gockner, and a second from Councilmember Blair. This is a voice or a roll call vote.
Actually, you're open for discussion.
Discussions.
I'd like to address the issue of parking. Does that increase the capacity of parking in that area if we do this vacationing?
It stays the same.
It stays the same.
There was a number in our work session, and I don't remember what it was, but there's like so many parking spots between 28th and 29th as it is, and if we were to consider angled parking, which we could do if there was so much need, then there's room to increase it more with that as well.
What that number was, it was like 15 or something like that.
Forty-eight, and then another one.
Fifteen additional.
Right, so it's like in the 40s or 50s, and it went up from there.
But then we would have to increase the pavement width by, you know, like 20 feet in order to do that.
And it was as is. We can do it with that.
That was one of the pictures that Mr. McConkey showed us, that with that we could stay the same way.
But I can understand the frustration of Mr. Peterson by not being able to get onto his property, and I think that's a really, that's the key to this whole problem, maybe, is for the city to come up with some idea of how to preserve those spaces in front of where his fence is, plus his gate, so that he does have access.
Mr. Ladder's here, and we'll just have him go ahead and take care of that.
I think that's a good solution to it.
Wonderful, thank you.
And I mean, I live closest to the area. You know, I walk by there almost every day, and it is like the citizens that live on the corner mentioned, it really is just a handful of days where it is full of people parked, so.
I think Mr. Handy did his homework. I mean, to be able to stand here and say that all of his neighbors agree, and all of his neighbors have assumed all the costs, I think that speaks volumes to what this will do for that area, so.
Further comments?
I just overheard Mr. Peterson say it's not the, it's not the issue, and I guess maybe if it's not the issue, maybe I don't understand the issue. Would it be all right if we let him articulate that issue a little bit before we vote?
Actually, you've closed the public hearing. That's not your normal protocol. I guess, unless you want to withdraw the motions and reopen, I mean, that's the only option you have. Could not be limited to one individual.
So if we can ask administration just to follow up with Mr. Peterson?
I've asked Mr. Ladder to talk to him before he leaves.
Comments? So we have a motion from Chair Gockner, and a second from Vice, or excuse me, a motion from Councilmember Gockner, and a second from Vice Chair Blair to adopt an ordinance 2012-1. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gockner? Aye. Councilmember Hayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Huysen?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Garner?
Aye. And we have, you know, again, as has been mentioned, we have the fullest respect for Mr. Peterson, and we will do what we can to work with you, and no disrespect, but, you know, we'll try to accommodate the neighbors too. Okay, moving on, we have redesignation of the Relief Society Building and Miles Goodyear Cabin as a historic resource.
Again, Mr. McConkey will be pinch hitting for Mr. Montgomery.
Mr. McConkey.
Thank you. The ordinance that you have this evening is, pertains to the two historic structures that are being moved because of the construction activity going on on the temple block. It was necessary that the Relief Society Building be relocated, as well as the Miles Goodyear Cabin. The Relief Society Building, that was the original location of the Relief Society Building, that's where it was constructed. The Miles Goodyear Cabin has been moved on a number of occasions. So this evening, it is being requested that you approve, let's see, so I get this right, approval of the amendment of the current local register by relocating the designation of the Relief Society Building and the Miles Goodyear Cabin from 2146 Grant to 2104 Lincoln, subject to the resolution language, making it clear the building and not the site is what is on the register at 2104 Lincoln, and that the 2146 Grant address be removed from the local register once the buildings are relocated. So that is, that is what is being requested this evening, that the site there on the corner of 22nd and Lincoln is where the Relief Society Building and the Miles Goodyear Cabin are being moved to, and they want it clear that it is only the buildings that are being put on the local register and designated, and not the site, because the site is not the original site. And taking the site that was, that's on the temple block and taking it off the register. And I'll, once again, all right, do you have any questions?
And I think the reason we're moving this, you know, just for the public's information, is to help preserve these buildings. As they were building and redoing the temple, there was fear that it would damage these buildings. Is that correct?
Yes, the Relief Society Building was in a very fragile condition and location, and it was the construction of the underground parking on that temple block butted up right against the Relief Society Building, and there was some serious concern that the building would be damaged during construction. And we do, and it was believed that the proposed location will give it more visibility and lead to more visits from the general public, so.
Since this is part, thank you, Mr. McConkey. Any other questions for Mr. McConkey? Since this is part of a public hearing, we will now accept public input on this proposed ordinance.
I'm Sharon Stoker, 765 Ben Lomond Avenue in South Ogden, and I'm here representing the museum board, and we appreciate you taking this opportunity to change this designation, because I know when we went to move it, there seemed to be a question as to whether it was the building or the site that was on the Historic Landmarks Commission, and so we're glad for this clarification. And we need to clarify the address, it's on the corner of 21st and Lincoln. The city Public Safety Building's on 22nd and Lincoln. We're not going to be there with them. So do you have any other questions for me? That's, we're just appreciative of the things that you've done to help us to make this move, and so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Has the building actually been moved yet, Mr. McConkey? It has been moved? A week from today. Okay, thank you.
Seeing no movement, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Have a motion from Councilmember Gockner, and a second from Councilmember Van Huysen to close the public hearing. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
And if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion that we adopt proposed ordinance 2012-2.
I'll second it.
And we have a motion from Councilmember Gockner, and a second from Councilmember Wicks to adopt proposed ordinance 2012-2. This is a roll call vote.
Member Hayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Huysen?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Garner?
Aye. And also with comments, I did drive by the site. The foundation is in. And as was mentioned, the building will be moved next week. And the cabin also is already up and ready to move. And so this is moving along and we wish you well in your future endeavors. Next is public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding your concerns or ideas. Please limit your comments to three minutes. In this form of government, all city personnel are the responsibility of the administration, not of the council. Please discuss any concerns you may have regarding staff with the mayor, chief administration, administrative officer, or department directors.
I live at 2546 Jefferson Avenue here in Ogden. I just had a slight, I guess, chance to breathe the events of the last couple of weeks. And Color Pro Lab and Bev's Imports as well as just myself, we just basically had a gift with regards to honors, in honor of Officer Frankum. And it's dated January 11th, 2012. And it says, "With a deep sense of reverence and respect, the citizens of Ogden, Utah express our sincere appreciation for your support in honoring the life and service of Agent Jared DeFranco." And so we just basically have the foreground of Peterstein Ogden and the ladder truck honoring you in the background, and then the municipal building. So I just wanted to present that to administration and do with it as you will.
Thank you, Mr. Pate. For the audience, we'll show them this picture. This is a beautiful painting or picture. And if any of you saw this down on Washington Boulevard, it truly was a moving event for our community. Further public comments? Comments from administration?
I would like to publicly thank the city council and the staff, certainly the city staff for what happened last Wednesday. I think that was an extremely difficult two weeks. And I saw some amazing teamwork and people came together in some very difficult and emotional circumstances. So I'd be remiss if I didn't publicly thank everyone that jumped in. That service on Wednesday was, was a great testament to the citizens of Ogden and the support we wanted to give those families. And I've just, again, pass along my gratitude.
Council staff?
Nothing tonight.
Council members? As Mr. Pate presented this, it did bring back many memories and we are very grateful for your efforts. Thank you. Okay, motion?
I agree with what Mayor Caldwell said. I'll get choked up if I try to say anything, so I'll just leave it at that and say that everybody who participated in all of the outpouring of support the past couple of weeks, it's very appreciated and it shows why we live in the best community in the world, I think.
And I would echo everything you've said and I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion from council member Gockner and a second from council member Hayer to adjourn. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. As a reminder, we have a special redevelopment agency meeting, which will, will be held immediately following this regular council meeting. And following that, we'll have a redevelopment agency work session and a special redevelopment agency meeting. The purpose of the work session is to discuss the River Project property sale and development agreement and board business.